Oh, because it has not fixed yet. All right. Good evening, everybody. We will get started. I will call this meeting to order of the November 26th regular city council meeting. If you can all please join and stand up and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item is approval of the minutes of the city council work session of November 12th, 2019, the regular city council meeting of November 12th, 2019, the HRA City Council Planning Commission Work Session of November 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. The first presentation goes to council member Supple.
I'm very pleased tonight to introduce the co-chairs of the Richfield Arts Commission. This group has been highly active this year and has done a lot of great projects and I really am thrilled to have them tell you about it. So I'm going to introduce the two co-chairs. They are Mia Simpson and Joyce Marie. So if you'd like to come forward and tell us all about the Arts Commission, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
One, I'm Mia Simpson.
Joyce Marie.
We had a PowerPoint, but technical difficulties. We're just going to read everything. So let me just grab my computer quick.
How's everybody this evening?
Doing well.
Okay, so we're here to provide an overview on the Richfield Art Commission activities for 2019. And the Richfield Arts Commission, known as RAC, its purpose is to raise awareness of, promote the value of, and advocate for and support the arts in Richfield. And Joyce and I are the co-chairs of the commission. So from highlights this year, we wanted to highlight our activities and we wanted to talk about some of the themes and spirit of our work. So we did quite a few things this year. Our primary highlight was the poetry contest, which was part of the 66th Street Restoration Effort. So we received approximately 80 poems from residents in the region and selected approximately 20 for placement on sidewalk panels on the west side of the 35W Bridge and then from about 11th Avenue to Cedar Avenue. That was culminated in an event that Joyce will describe more upcoming, in which we brought all the poets together for them to share their poetry and also build a community experience. We also did support the teen art fair at the library this year. So we judged middle school and high school art from students from the Richfield School District. We supported the Little Library, which was a gift from the Rotary Club of Richfield. We selected images for electrical box wraps as part of a collaboration with Public Works. Also did public art displays at City Hall in the display case right outside and did the walls of the community center. And then finally, there was trunk or treat, which was part of a collaboration with the Morris Nielsen Funeral Chapel. The other thing we wanted to emphasize was really how much collaboration took place this year. So collaborations with local city departments as well as nonprofits and businesses in the community. And every single thing that we talked about was a collaboration. So that was a really powerful piece of our efforts this year. In addition, we grew a lot as a commission. So we had very strong volunteer participation and really worked to prioritize our efforts. So, you know, I really feel like we matured as a group. In addition, our community efforts, I think, brought some meaningful community healing based on, you know, the poetry event that took place in July, which Joyce will speak to more. Want to take her away?
Yes, we collaborated with the Crossroads Panorama, which is youth education through the arts, empowering young people to be successful and families. And this poetry contest, we were happy that it was such a success. We, the poetry contest was held at the band show. And just to see the poets and having them share their heartfelt poetry was very, was great because it brought a lot of energy and unity, togetherness. And there were a few times that there were tears shed. And so we know that poetry is a healing. And so basically, when these poets wrote these poems, they were expressing how they felt. And so we were happy that we were able to be successful with the RAC and all those that participated in this poetry contest and to see the many people that came out for that particular time.
So looking at 2020 and beyond, so we're going to do some continuing initiatives that took place this year. We'll continue to support the Little Library, public art displays, the teen art fair, a Halloween event. And we will be doing another poetry contest in 2020. So we'll be doing a soft launch in December and we'll basically be filling the sidewalk panels around Lyndale Avenue. So the goal will be to collect poems by February 14th and then have selections announced in May. And we'd like to do another event this year at the band shell. It was very hot at the one that took place in July. So we're probably going to be doing something probably at the tail end of the summer. That's what we're planning at this point. In addition, we're going to be supporting the pool mural project. So we've got a request for proposal in the works that will hopefully occur sometime this spring. And we'd like to use the theme Families Flourishing in order to select the artwork and, you know, the spirit of that project. So the goal will hopefully be to have something in place by the time the pool opens. We'll have to see how that selection process goes, that we can get in place by then. The other thing I wanted to talk about was really our interest in doing more multi-year planning. And so we've been talking with the Parks Department about building a plan for 21, 2021 and 2022. Really, the focus is going to be a vision for arts in Richfield. We'd like to identify locations and arts projects that speak to our community. And this would also include funding, planning, and needed collaboration for the arts project. We want to continue to leverage the theme of Families Flourishing and emphasize inclusiveness and community connections as part of these arts projects. And we would love the city council to take part in some kind of working session next year to really build that vision. This is something that's happening in other suburbs and we'd like to see the same thing here. So thank you for your energy. Yes, we had a whole slide with special thanks. So thanks to all the partnerships, thanks to Mary, thanks to Mary Kay. You know, it was really a great year.
And thank you to the entire commission because I know you guys have really poured your heart and soul into it.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from council members or commissioners? Council member Troutman.
Well, I just have a couple of comments for both Mia and Dr. Joyce Marie, who's walking away real quick.
Come back, Joyce.
And the whole Arts Commission. I think so much of your work, and I just want to highlight a couple of things. One, I think it's so tremendous. All the things you talked about last year, you did them all and you did more of them. And I think that's, this is, people take for granted how much work people do and it's not for pay. It's not, you know, we'll double your salaries, I promise.
It's very generous of you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Don't worry about it. No, these are, these are all volunteer commissions. But art is also compounding. I mean, you're doing those, you're doing the theater events and the spoken word events, which is a great new addition. But you're also just remaking the face of Richfield with art. Dozens of poems, year after year after year, is, there's a compounding effect to that. So as we walk through our community, as we bike through our community, we get to experience art in new and different ways. I love the box, the electrical box on the corner of Penn and 66th Street that now has a gorgeous picture of Woodlake Nature Center on it. And that's, that's a space that somebody had a vision for, that made something beautiful and something that reminded us about ourselves. And so you guys are doing that work and I'm really grateful and I appreciate it very much.
We just want to see Richfield flourish. And that's what we're looking for, even more, bigger things and greater things. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Great. I would like to just also say thank you for your leadership. Our Arts Commission does excellent work and I'm really glad that you are focusing on long-term planning and funding because I would really love to see us do things in addition to the wraparound and the poems in the sidewalks. Those are really great projects and it would be great to see if there, if we can leverage outside funding to do some really big, great, public art projects in the future. So thank you for your leadership and thank you to the commissioners who are here. Thank you. Thanks. The next item goes to council member Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Up here for the Community Services Commission is Art Felgate. And, you know, one of the things about this commission is that it's kind of really a secret because it's a fun commission and they do all kinds of things. They're always busy, they're always involved, and they're always making solid recommendations. And we rely on them for their sound advice. And they've been working lately on the city parks. But I'll let Mr. Felgate know it. Are you on your second term, Art?
Yes, I am.
Good.
Thank you, council member.
And I think you're the vice chair, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the chair couldn't make it. I was told I have two minutes, so I'll try to make this very quick. What we did last year, one of our main responsibilities is maintenance of park equipment, park facilities, and also capital improvements. So we oversaw the replacement of play equipment at Jefferson, Nicollet, and Taft Parks. That included hosting neighborhood meetings, getting feedback from residents. And then we ended up recommending the award of contract to Northland Recreation. We recommended council approval of facility dedication applications for the stage at the new Richfield Community Band Shell. So it was not the band shell itself, but the stage is actually has a dedication to a sponsor. And so we looked at applications for that and recommended that to council. We prioritized proposed capital projects and recommended council approval of the 2020 Parks Recreation and Open Space Capital Improvement Budget. We provided guidance and feedback to staff regarding the new Roundup for Richfield Parks program at the Richfield Liquor Stores. So as everybody may not know, all of the revenue to support parks, capital improvements, and maintenance in the city of Richfield comes from municipal liquor store profits. So if that doesn't go up, we're sort of left with a pretty fixed budget even as costs increase over time. So one of the things I think I'm most proud of is that we came up with a scheme to have a roundup program. So when people purchase at the liquor stores, they're asked, do they want to round up to donate money to the parks? And that's been fairly successful. We've, I think, averaged a few hundred dollars a week with that program. And some of that funding has been dedicated to specific projects. And we've communicated that to customers while asking them for that roundup program. So I think that's, that's a really good program to supplement the income we get off the Richfield Liquor Store profit. We reviewed options for a proposed universally inclusive playground at Augsburg Park and approved the plan submitted by Northland Recreation. This is another really great project that I feel very proud to be a part of. This is an all-inclusive playground, so it really can accommodate any resident with any type of handicap or disability. So it's something I think we're going to be really proud of as a community to have that resource. We provided feedback and support for the Ice Arena Refrigeration Conversion Project. So due to legislation a few years ago, the current R22 freon-based system is going to become, not allowed anymore to be used for refrigeration. So there's a much more environmentally friendly version of refrigeration that is used to cool ice now. But we have to convert all of our capital facilities to that new system and it costs millions of dollars. So we've been involved in that for the last several years and trying to, trying to deal with that issue and come up with a solution. And I think that's going to be bonded. Reviewed the city storm water pollution prevention plan. Again, that kind of falls within the purview of the Recreation Services. Appointed new and returning members to the Friends of Woodlake. So Woodlake Nature Center has a, basically a booster organization called FOWL, Friends of Woodlake. And one of our responsibilities as the Community Services Commission is to review applications for people that wish to be part of that organization and recommend if they're approved or not. Discussed options multiple times for improvements to Nicollet Park. So Nicollet Park is on Nicollet Avenue as you're going towards Cub, right before you come to Crosstown. It's, that park has had a lot of challenges over the years and so we're trying to make it more relevant for citizens moving forward. And a couple of times, we discussed options for a proposed dog park, dog park facility, or maybe two. So that's an ongoing discussion we're going to continue to look at over the next year. In addition to all this, we have liaisons and all the other commissions that report regularly. And including pool, recreation programs, parks maintenance, storm water management, which I mentioned. And there's a newer initiative in the city for sustainability and organic composting. So we've been involved in that as well. And the next year, we will continue to prioritize capital improvements, continue to be involved in the process of planning for this proposed dog park. And two parks are targeted for replacement of play equipment next year and that's Madison and Washington Parks. And that process will also, again, include resident neighborhood feedback in selecting the equipment that we put in that park. That's all my, I have for my report, if there's any questions.
Well, I wanted to ask, Art, what about the Sustainability Commission? Is that, is that still being worked on?
Yes, very much. In fact, there's a new, there's a new city employee that, I forget her name, Amy.
Rachel.
Rachel, yeah, I'm sorry. That is actually leading that effort. And so she's reporting at the meetings now. So that's moving to a higher level, I would say, at this point.
Okay. Then the other thing I was going to ask you was, you know, you all put together, what's it called? It's application for the use of space in the parks?
Right, yeah.
Have you said, you haven't yet set the fees for that?
I think we have proposed the fees and I think they're $250. Is that right? Yeah. I don't know if that's been approved yet, but that's been proposed, I know. It's a slight increase. It's on par with other cities, so it's not out of range.
Right, right. And then what else was I going to ask you? You know, the other thing that's very impressive is that, you know, and I know that Amy Markle is here and she, it's impressive that a lot of the money comes from grants that you apply for and receive. And, you know, and that kind, that helps the city quite a bit, you know, when we're funded. And the other thing that's impressive is the thoroughness of how you evaluate all the, what you're going to put in a park. So that you take, you take a lot of things into consideration where, as before, I remember, we never even talked about disabilities and accommodating this type of group or that group or whatever. So that's, that's also really important.
Right, yeah. The equipment is getting much more up to date in all the parks as their time comes up to replace it. I think people might also notice all the signs in all the parks have been refreshed. That a lot of them are getting kind of rotten and falling apart. So we're, I think they've all been done over the last year as well.
And thank you also for your, the work on, at the band shell. Because, you know, that was a big proponent of that, so I'm glad that's going well. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Other questions from council members or comments? Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming and presenting. The next, the last presentation is to council member Waylon.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to invite up Logan Tyne from the Friendship City Commission. Take it away, Logan. Thank you very much. So the Friendship City Commission is wrapping up another very fun and successful year this year. Over the course of the year, we accomplished quite a few things. So one of, a few of the big ones that I wanted to highlight here for everyone. We oversaw the installation of the new Sophia statue in Heredia Park, which is right outside the back here after, unfortunately, the previous one was badly damaged. So we got that up and installed and looks great out there right now. We attended numerous community events around, throughout Richfield, Unity in the Community, Pen Fest, to continue to promote and highlight our partnership with our Friendship City in Costa Rica. We are really moving full steam ahead, planning our next trip to Costa Rica, which is going to take place in 2021. So we're very excited about that and actually, registration for that is already full. So people are definitely excited, even though it's well over a year away still, which is very cool. We continue to maintain the display case right outside of, right outside of the room here in City Hall, highlighting the uniqueness of Heredia. And we're going to continue to maintain that into 2020. We had a very successful art exhibit at the community center featuring photos from a commission member, Cynthia Mendel, who's been to Costa Rica 20 times. And I actually don't think that's an exaggeration. And for photographs that she's taken on her numerous trips, they're highlighting the uniqueness of Heredia and the wildlife that is there. And one of the photos from that exhibit is now been wrapped around an electrical box on Nicollet and 70th. So that is up there now too as well. And we've continued to think ahead to the future. So we've designed and developed new shirts for us at our different community events. And thinking forward to 2020, we're focusing on continued ways to get involved in the community to highlight our relationship with our Friendship City there. We're going to be creating a new display case right outside here to highlight some new, new things from Heredia that maybe residents have yet to see or be familiar with. And then iron out and finalize those planning details for the 2021 trip. As soon as we get to a year away, we're officially able to make some reservations and book travel and things like that. So counting down the days to do that for everyone. And then continue to be involved in the community as best as possible to promote the relationship with our Friendship City down in Costa Rica. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, I wanted to ask, when was the last time that the Heredia folks came to Richfield? Do you remember?
I honestly don't know. I think it's been a few years at this point. Okay. You had folks for the statue.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, okay, great. Good. It's, I would encourage people to, if they ever, it was an open space, is to, you know, go to Costa Rica, Heredia, San Jose, you know, just beautiful, beautiful. I mean, if you, I could live there all year round because it's 70 degrees all year round. So that's nice.
And that's one of the things that's been so great about being part of the commission, the passion of everyone on the commission for Costa Rica, for Heredia, and then the relationship between our two cities is, is pretty cool to be a part of.
Any comments or questions? Great. Thank you so much for coming and presenting.
Thank you.
The next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar and will be handed over to city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we only have one item on the consent calendar. Item A, consider approval of an update to the city's capital asset policy.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from council members? Council member Supple.
I just wanted to say thank you because it was really good to look at the long-term planning and find out how it all works. So it was a very good educational piece, at least for myself as a new council member. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. The next item for council consideration is the Truth in Taxation Public Hearing Regarding the 2020 Property Tax Levy, The 2019 Revised and 2020 Proposed Budget, and 2020 Proposed Water, Wastewater, Storm Sewer, Utility, and Street Light Rates. I'll read the executive summary and then hand it over to our finance director. At the September 10th, 2019 city council meeting, the city council adopted the 2020 Preliminary Property Tax Levy and announced November 26th at 7:00 PM as the date and time for the Statutory Truth in Taxation Public Hearing. Hennepin County has mailed the proposed 2020 Property Tax Statements to property owners in Richfield, where, which are based upon the proposed levy and to announce the date of the public hearing. I will pass it over to our finance director, Chris Regis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've just got, council members have seen this presentation before, but I'm sure members of the audience haven't seen it. So I'll try to make it brief. Start out with our timetable and key events. We started back in May with the entire process, went through the summer, and now we're at the Truth in Taxation Hearing here on November 26th, second to last bullet, and we'll certify the final levy on December 10th. Some of the key issues for 2020, property taxes remain our primary funding source. The 2020 budgeted revenues include 1.45 million of local government aid. That's a $250,000 increase from the prior year. We also had to budget in health insurance increases of approximately 10%. We had a debt service, new debt service tax levy for the 2019 A-Bonds of $388,000. We're incurring police and fire personnel cost increases as we have younger officers moving through the step increases. We had an increase of two staff positions for 2020. We also had a reallocation of staff in the Administrative Services Department. And we had a $15,000 increment recently in our levy of rolling stock and equipment and it brought it up to $815,000. And we also have infrastructure needs of the Ice Arena, or the Ice Arena of Woodlake and 65th Street. Just a history of state aid here. You can see for 2020, we've been notified that we should expect about a $117,000 increase in the city's LGA. Look at a revenue comparison between taxes and intergovernmental revenues. If we go all the way back to 2001, which was kind of a baseline year for this, taxes were at 38% of the general fund budget while intergovernmental revenues were at 39%. If we move forward then to 2020, there's been a dramatic shift. We're now taxes are 68% of the budget while intergovernmental revenues are now 10%. If we drill down into that a little further and look at local government aid, which at that, back in 2001, accounted for 24% of the general fund revenues. If we look at 2019, it's barely, barely, excuse me, just below 5% and 2020 is about 5.7%. So we get to our 2020 Proposed Gross Tax Levy, it's approximately $22.6 million. That's an increase of 4.9% over the 2019 levy. The components of that levy are the general fund levy, which is 17.4 million, the equipment levy, which is 815,000, the ADA levy, which is 553,000, which gives us our base levy total of $18.8 million. And we need to add to that our debt service tax levy, which is 3.4 million, and our tax abatement levy of 353,000. And that gives us our $22.6 million. Just a levy comparison with other communities here in the metro area. We're sitting at number five, which isn't great, but isn't bad. I suppose looking at some of the other potential proposed increases from other communities. Just a history of our gross tax levy, 4.9% for this year, 4.87% last year, 6.11% in 2018. You can see kind of all over the board a little bit there. What would our tax levy be if there's no debt service levy for our Series 2019 A-Bonds? It would drop from 4.9% down to 4.9%. It would, it would drop from 4.9 down to 3.11 and prior to 2008, there were no debt service tax levies here in the city. Our 2020 proposed general fund budget is 25.4 million dollars, that's a, almost a, uh, excuse me, that's a 5.08% increase over the 2019 adopted budget. Just look at the components of general fund revenues, we have taxes, license permits, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeitures and miscellaneous revenues and transfers. Uh, that equals our 25.4 million. Just a comparison between 2020 and 2019 for general fund revenues, you can see there's basically, well, there is no change just from year to year in all the revenue category. If you go back ten years, there's some changes, but they're all, they're all very slight. Really, our revenue, um, the revenues in all our categories have remained pretty consistent over the years. Looking at general funded expenditures by department, uh, you can see the three largest are public safety, fire and public work. I'll get, I'll get back to those three later. Um, if we look at a comparison between 2020 and 2019 proposed, um, general fund expenditures, you can see, again, with, uh, same thing with revenues, there's very little, little change between the departments in the years. So here we are, public safety, public work and fire equate to seventy-five percent of the general fund revenue, or ju, just over nineteen million dollars. The total general fund tax levy revenues, there's only 17.3 million dollars. Look at our general fund history from 2013, the average increase was approximately 3.1 percent. Uh, we have one hundred and ninety-nine full-time budgeted positions in, um, in the city this year. We have four new positions in 2019 and two new positions in 2020. What is the impact of our proposed 4.9% levy increase on a $250,000 property in our city? Um, if we look at 2019 and 2020, where there's no change, no change in market value or anything like that, it's only a nine dollar and twenty-three percent increase. But if we put in a 5.2% market value increase based on Hennepin County estimates, um, it'll be a, uh, uh, just below a $79 increase per year. Uh, the 2020 capital improvement budget is at 18.2 million dollars. Uh, some of the major projects include the finalization of Sixty-Sixth Street and Lyndale Avenue projects, the Ice Arena Refrigeration Project, uh, the Mill and Overlay Project, which is, uh, 2020 is the final year of that project. There are several utility projects and there's several recreation projects included in that budget. Uh, if we look at our rolling stock, uh, and equipment purchases for 2020, it exceeds one million dollars. Uh, we do have a general tax levy to help fund that, it's $815,000. Um, I have budgeted for central garage and IT cash flow transfers in to cover that gap. Uh, some of the major purchases are a dump truck, two sidewalk plows, three detective hybrid vehicles, two interceptor squads and a computer network infrastructure and equipment. Moving on to the utility rates, uh, the water rate, wa, wa, waterfront is looking at five percent increases across the three tiers. So you can see there's a twenty cent increase, twenty-three cent increase and twenty-eight cent increase, um, of those three tiers. Wastewater is also looking at a five percent increase, it's a twenty-eight cent increase per thousand gallons or five dollars and ninety-one cents. Uh, for a typical user, um, the proposed sewer rate increase is approximately two dollars and ten cents per quart. Uh, stormwater is a seven percent increase, that's one dollars and thirty-three cents increase per quarter or twenty dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, rationale for some of these rating increases, um, there is outstanding debt within the utility funds. A lot, um, as the roads are repaired or redone, uh, the sewer, but we also replace the infrastructure underneath the roads and, and that's part of the increase in the debt service for those funds. Uh, there's capital infrastructure needs and requirements, level of needed working capital, annual operating expenses and, uh, MCS sewer charge. Well, where are we going? Uh, we have significant right-of-way projects on the horizon and a lot of those projects will be funded with debt or potentially with debt, recreation infrastructure needs, we have, and that debt funding for those projects creates pressure on the tax levy. Um, Richfield must continue a long-term strategy for economic independence, um, LGA independence, however, it, there's a lot of pressure to maintain that. Um, we've increased the amount of, of budgeted LGA over the last three years. Um, it, it, as a result of the debt service costs that we've incurred, um, we need to maintain our long-term financial planning, we need to maintain current level of our quality services and also contain our operating cost. I went through that very quick, any questions?
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? I would just like to say thank you very much, Mr. Regis, for, um, providing us this information every single year. And if, um, residents would like to get more in-depth and detailed information, um, there are several study sessions regarding our proposed budget, um, in, in the website, on the website. Um, and if you look at the information that you gave us, what we've seen over the years is, um, our staff has done an excellent job of providing excellent quality services, of doing more with less and really, uh, make the increase that we, the increases that we do see are, one, to keep up with inflation, to keep up with rising cost of healthcare, of supporting our staff to go through the steps. Um, but also, most importantly, um, to cover the cost of our aging infrastructure, which are things that, um, we really cannot avoid in, uh, in covering. And so, uh, thank you as always to our department heads, to our staff, um, for doing such great work, um, with, with, um, our taxpayer dollars. And it was also nice to see, um, the comparison of Richfield in relation to increases in, in other communities and I do think, um, we are, we are faring, um, pretty well. So thank you very much, Mr. Regis. Any other comments or questions from folks? No, uh, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I, I just want to, want to echo those comments and thank our staff for, you know, just recognition that a lot of those increases are for, for, for healthcare, uh, costs that are going up and hard costs that are going up and hard, and fixed, and assets that need, uh, need to be replaced. And, and so we know that you guys, this, this budget reflects sacrifices that you guys have made and also to our broader community. Uh, just, we're really proud of how our city's developing for our roads that are looking better and better and our infrastructure that even that we can't see, that goes underneath those roads, all the public works. Um, those things are, are improving and being maintained and being well-studied, but that also creates, um, uh, pressure in our community. So our community, I think we're getting a good product in return, but we're also making, uh, um, commitments as a community. So I think, I think everybody, everybody's leaning in and our, our city's moving in a good direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Wayland.
Um, just a quick comment to let residents know, if you haven't heard already, um, that your estimates that you received from the county, uh, your final bill may actually be slightly lower, they don't include, there were two TIF districts that just, uh, rolled off, um, that basically our, our tax base increased from before our, uh, the estimates were calculated. So you will get slightly lower, uh, so you have that to look forward to.
Thank you for making that clarification, um, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments or questions? Great, um, while this is an open hearing, so is anybody here for the Truth in Taxation Public Hearing tonight? This is an open hearing, is anyone here tonight? Great, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing has been closed. Um, and I'd like to make the motion to schedule the final action on the 2020 Property Tax Levy, the 2019 Revised, 2020 Proposed Budget and Proposed 2020 Utility Rates for the Regular City Council Meeting of December tenth, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from council? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is consideration of a resolution approving a subdivision and a plat of property at 6812 Emerson Lane, allowing the construction of five new homes. Endress Custom Homes Incorporated, the builder, has applied to purchase and develop the vacant property at 6812 Emerson Lane, the property, from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, or the HRA. The builder proposes to split the 1.3 acre lot into five separate lots, allowing for the construction of five new single-family homes. The homes would be based on the same split level model with variations to the roof lines, siding patterns and exterior colors. Each home would have four bedrooms, three bathrooms and attached two-car, two-car garage and would receive sound attenuation upgrades to mitigate the noise of nearby Interstate Highway 35W. A public road, Emerson Lane, would be constructed to provide access to the homes with a turnaround for emergency vehicles. In addition to the road extension, water, storm and sanitary sewer mains would be extended to serve the new development. In July 2019, the HRA approved a contract for private development with the builder for the construction of five single-family homes and required public improvements on the property. The homes would be constructed as part of the Richfield Rediscovered Program, a highly successful program that is intended to provide move-up housing to new families or growing families who wish to stay in the community. The city's comprehensive plan continues to identify this as a need. In August 2019, it was discovered that the survey provided by the seller to the HRA in 2005 was in error. That survey incorrectly located the west property line and resulted in the lot being marginally smaller than had previously been believed to be the case. On October twenty-ninth, 2019, the builder submitted an application to plat or subdivide the property, including five residential lots and dedicating the public right-of-way necessary to extend Emerson Lane. Due to the amount of space needed to extend a public road through the property, four of the five lots would be narrower than the fifty-foot minimum width required by the zoning code. All five lots would be under the required 6,700 square foot minimum lot area. The city's subdivision ordinance provides for exceptions to be granted from these requirements under certain conditions. And here's a quote from that code. Whenever the tract to be subdivided or platted is of such unusual size or shape or is surrounded by unusual conditions that the strict application of the requirements contained in this section shall result in a substantial hardship, the council may vary or modify such requirements so that the subdivider is allowed to develop the property in a reasonable manner, but in such a manner that the public welfare and interests of the city and surrounding area are protected and the general intent and spirit of the zoning code is preserved, end quote. With the minimum lot width and area requirement is, while the minimum lot width and area requirement is not met, the comprehensive plan allows for resident, residential densities of up to seven housing units per acre in low-density residential areas of the city. The area of the property proposed for development is approximately 1.13 acres. Development of five homes would be consistent with the density guidelines provided in the comprehensive plan. Staff finds the unusual shape, size and surrounding conditions of the property to be an unusual circumstance that would present a hardship for the development of five homes. All five homes will need, all other, all five homes will meet all other zoning code requirements, including lot depth and setback requirements. The builder has sufficiently shown that all five homes can be built as proposed without any need for additional variances. The proposed plat has been reviewed by the City Attorney's Office, Richfield Public Works and Mindot. All comments have been addressed or included as stipulations in the resolution. There are two resolutions attached related to this proposal. The subdivision waiver resolution would authorize the HRA to split the property into two parts. The main portion that would be sold to the builder and a long narrow strip that would be retained by the HRA. The plat resolution would approve a final plat of the property to be known as the Galatians Addition. Staff finds the proposed plat means requirements and therefore recommends approval of the attached resolutions. So that was the executive summary, did staff want to add anything to that?
Madam Mayor and council members, the only thing I would add, uh, you know, it says in the staff report that, um, the, all five lots would not meet the 6,700 square feet, um, prescribed as the minimum. We did take a look at the community as a whole and seventeen percent of Richfield's existing lots do not meet that, uh, 6,700 square foot minimum. So it's not, uh, something under 6,700, uh, square feet would not be out of character for the community as a whole.
All right, thank you. So this is a public hearing and if there are people that would wish to testify, you would come to the, um, podium up there, state your name and address and write it down on the sheet and then you would have three minutes, so is there anyone that would like to comment on this issue?
Uh, my name's William Godby, I currently reside at 7325 Fourteenth Avenue South. Um, from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty-seventeen, we were residents of Richfield in one of the, um, nineteen or seventeen percent of the houses that are smaller than that. Uh, we moved away for about a year and a half and then coming back. Um, we contacted the city about the Rediscover Richfield Program, we're put in contact with Mr. Endress and, um, it's the only reason that we have found an ability to stay in Richfield with a growing family. It's one of these houses that he's, um, developing. I find that it's above the median value in Richfield, so it should help with taxes, but it seems to be under market value. Uh, whenever he seems to sell a house, it seems to go really, really quick. And from being in the market for the past six months, you know, I'm willing to wait another seven or eight months for these houses to get built, uh, through the quality that I've seen and really the value that he provides. And it allows us to stay in Richfield as opposed to having to go out further into Bloomington or Eagan. Um, and so for my wife and I and a growing family that want to stay in Richfield and working downtown Minneapolis, it's just a really great option for us and so we're hoping to have the ability to stay in Richfield. That's all I got, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment?
Good evening, uh, my name is Steve Archer, 6720 Emerson Avenue South. Um, you know, I've attended many of the meetings here for this project and proposals and generally, when I leave a meeting, I am feeling confused and frustrated. So many times, you know, I've walked the property with many of you, many of the Planning Commission members, I think some of the HRA members also, and for the most part, the conclusion is, is that five homes just don't seem to fit this property. It's like no one's really listening to my need or my neighbors' needs here. Um, so that's been frustrating and confusing also. Um, however, a meeting or two ago, um, there was a proposal for four homes to be built on Emerson Lane and I'm not sure exactly who that came from. I have a hunch it might have come from John Stark and Julie Urban. So if indeed that is the case, I want to thank you for considering that. Uh, that was awful generous of you. And once again, I'm confused why that, other than the financials, why that didn't happen. Um, so that said, um, I have a concern and, uh, a request, I guess, moving forward, um, and that has to do with the condition of the property. On Emerson Lane, it's been neglected and I think this is the time to clean it up and clean it up properly. Also, a couple of years ago, there was a silver maple that was removed, uh, by the city and, uh, there is a stump, a huge stump back there that needs to be taken care of. Along with that, alongside that tree is another silver maple that, um, on recommendation of, uh, my arborist, Al Olson with Rainbow Tree Company, he recommends, and I agree, because of the deterioration of that tree and the problems that that tree is going to pose down the road, that that tree also be removed during this, um, project. Yeah, I think that's about it. I just, but then also, um, earlier said, I think it was, Councilmember Mary Supple was saying about move-up housing for Richfield. Do you have any ideas, how many current residents are going to be buying in this new move-up housing? Not that it makes a big difference, but I'm just curious how many member, you know, the community, I know right, right here, but are, is it working for move-up housing?
All right. Well, thank you for your time, and we'll ask staff to address that after people have finished making their comments. Thank you. Is there... Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. Thank you.
I just have one comment. I'm Jody Powell, 6800 Emerson Lane. In the quote that you... Or the code that you mentioned about getting the variations or the variances, I mentioned substantial hardship. I don't think this is substantial hardship. This is going from five houses to less houses. If they went to less houses, you wouldn't need the variances that are being requested. So I don't actually feel like it fits within the code that you were referencing.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jerry Scott, and I've lived in my Richfield home for 42 years. And through this process, we've gone to all the meetings and we've... I just don't feel that the builder is honoring our neighborhood with the design of the house. We are all, you know, basically just the ramblers, and I feel that this cluster of homes back there just does not honor the neighborhood. And the neighbors and me and my husband, we all feel that this is being rushed through, and it needs to be discussed a little bit further. The neighbors are willing to try to work with four homes on that property, but the builder and I'm not sure who wants pushing five, but that's what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello. My name is Sarah Witty. I live at 66... I had to write it down because I'm a little nervous. I live at 6633 Emerson Avenue South. Unlike people who have lived in the neighborhood for 45 years, I moved in two years ago. For a little bit of context, I know I look a little rough around the edges, but I'm actually a PhD in art and architectural history, and I picked this neighborhood because of its architectural history. As was mentioned, most of our houses are ramblers. They bore a lot of people, but I think they're fascinating. It's a very good point to say that the new construction does not fit with the spirit of our neighborhood. This is important because if you know anything about suburban design and urban design and the evolution of cities, you will know that in places that are small, particularly places like Richfield that are, what is it, seven miles by seven miles? It's the spirit of the community, not its ability to prosper by selling land. That's very awkward, FYI. It's not like it's a prime area. It's very awkward if you've never seen it. Anyway, what draws people to places like Richfield is its aesthetics, and the fact that because it's small, it can be devoted to interpersonal relationships that aren't necessarily ruined by large-scale monetary concerns. I know money is important to a city, but what's really important is the people who live there. This kind of design, something that is smashed into a very small space, is notorious historically for creating what is considered urban rot. This is a particular problem in dead-end areas. If you look into the history of all city neighborhoods that have collapsed, most of them are on dead ends, their streets don't follow through. Our neighborhood is unique in the fact that it has sustained itself for so long, but if you cram five houses into this tiny space that do not fit with the neighborhood, you are going to create the possibility of alienating the people who already live here in favor of creating something that is possibly in the short term profitable, but in the long term may lead to the degradation of an established neighborhood. Now, that's just logical stuff. As far as affective things go, as was previously mentioned, a number of us have been at many of these meetings, and we have not been listened to, and we are the people who live here. I understand that the city needs to make money and that it wants to expand and it wants to give people a place to live. That's important, but we already live here, and you represent us, and we have not only provided you with logical reasons why this is a horrible idea, we have begged you from an emotional standpoint to respect the fact that our neighborhood means something to us. It means something to people who lived here for 45 years, and it means something to someone like me who moved in two years ago and was welcomed with open arms and plenty of food and weird jokes on the street. These people are my neighbors, and I care about them. They are your constituents, and you should care about them. Please, listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is John Powell. I'm at 6800 Emerson Lane. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Many of you have walked the property there at 6812 Emerson Lane with Emerson neighbors and voiced your agreement that five homes simply would be too many homes for this smaller, unique lot. I ask that you go back to your walk on this special piece of property and remember those feelings and emotions that you experienced when preparing to cast your vote tonight to approve the smaller lot sizes. Richfield has been visionary in its thoughtfulness to preserve and maintain green space throughout the city and its neighborhoods, a criteria many homeowners seek out when identifying a city to call home. This is another opportunity for you to continue to preserve the green space that is unique to the city of Richfield and its residents when comparing to immediately surrounding suburbs such as Minneapolis. Please continue to preserve the raw resource of green space that should not be taken for granted. On behalf of the Emerson neighborhood, I ask that you vote no tonight for the approval of the smaller lot sizes. Thank you for your consideration and your service to this community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Sean. I'm here with my wife Angela. We're actually some of the prospective homebuyers for these lots in question. We currently live in St. Paul, but just a few years ago, we were living in Richfield for a few years. I've also been working in this city for the last 12 years of my life, so I'm very familiar with the community here. We've been looking for a new home to live in. We've been kind of in this process, very similar to your story, for like the last year, and we knew we wanted to come back to Richfield. It's been kind of a journey to find something that fit both our budget and also our style and our love of what we expect in a home, and we couldn't quite find anything until we found these properties. Well, we had a chance to visit the home that is modeled after these properties, and it's something that we fell in love with immediately when we walked in the door. So I thank you for your time. I hope this is successful.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
John, could I get that camera on?
All right, and please state your name for the record.
Oh, Billy? Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, if the EV could put the overhead camera on, that'd be appreciated.
Thanks. Oh.
All right. So your time is starting now, so please state your name. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Dustin Endress. I'm the builder. I just wanted to answer some of the concerns. We did try four lots, but the neighbors didn't support it when we had that meeting with the HRA. Five lots do fit, and we've, you know, extensively reviewed this with staff, and I can show you just... I don't know if you guys have seen these views or not here, but, you know, that's how the development would look here. That'd be the backyard view there from where the neighbors are. Let me get one other. Here's this with some of the existing trees on there, you know, just general representations, and then some of the trees that we're looking to plant. So it gets to be a little bit hard to see with all the trees there and stuff, but I tried to show, you know, some better views of what it looks like with some landscaping, And then just one duty. Just kind of a two-dimensional view there from overhead then.
Mr. Endress, you've got about a minute left.
Okay. And regarding that the neighborhood is predominantly ramblers, that's true, but the Richfield rediscovered program wants us to build two stories. They prefer to build two stories, not ramblers. And that... What that does is that helps to encourage existing ramblers to, you know, pop their top and do an addition on the second floor to help in, you know, improve their properties and do some remodeling and stuff. And all of these are pre-sold, so all five homes are pre-sold, and we also have a list of about a dozen people for backups as well. So there's obviously a demand for new housing in Richfield, so we're just doing our best to accommodate. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Anyone else who wishes to comment?
We didn't, in fact, oppose the four-house plan. What we opposed was $60,000 to the builder for the four-house change without an established plan for building and an extension of six months to sell the four houses. We did not oppose the four-house plan. We actually supported fewer houses. What we opposed was the way in which that plan was to be enacted. I think that's very clear to say. Do they really want us to put horrible extensions on the top of our houses? To change a house by adding a top to it is not actually an aesthetically good plan. That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Then I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
There was a... There were a couple of questions, Mr. Stark, that were asked about data about the move-up housing, et cetera. Could you address that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioner, or council members. I can sure try to. I'm going to try to go through these. You know, the question about four houses and whether four houses were appropriate there, just to maybe clarify that. And it's... This is a little bit of an aside because it's with the platting and subdivision, you know, it's not really economic considerations that you're taking into under consideration, but this was brought up, so I will address it. As was mentioned in the staff report, the HRA did approve a... An agreement to sell the property for five homes in July. As Mr. Archer guessed, staff, you know, as the summer went on, said, "Well, let's take one more shot at seeing if we can make four work." And we... We knew that with four homes, that there was less profit to be made by the developer and made the project less financially feasible, so we did our best to estimate what we thought that that impact would have been. So we went to the HRA in October and said, "We thought it was possible to convert this from five homes to four to make it economically kind of a wash for the developer." Our estimate was that it would need an additional $60,000 in assistance. We didn't have the exact number at that time. The exact number turns out to have been 37,500, but the HRA, I think based on testimony that they heard from people at the meeting and based on their own thoughts, were not supportive of additional subsidy to make four properties work. So we were... Staff was directed to let the existing development agreement that calls for five houses to continue. One of the requirements of that purchase agreement was that all of the properties must be sold by some certain date in December, pre-sold. That has obviously been met since all the properties have now been spoken for. So that's the background on the four-home piece. Now, there was a question about, you know, a hardship and what would constitute a hardship, and in the way we are viewing this, five houses could be built on this property but for the unusual shape, the adjacency to 35W, and the lack of accessible utilities. And so that is the hardship we went through. Actually, I can bring a slide up. So the subject property has the turquoise outline on it that we're talking about tonight, but right across 35W, you'll see a couple of triangular properties that are yellow. Those do not meet the city's standards. The width is incorrect, and there are some other issues with them, but they were approved this way because of the unusual circumstance of being next to 35W. You know, Richfield was primarily developed at right angles. We have a grid system road. Unfortunately, when the state of Minnesota and the interstate highway system put in 35W, they came in at an angle, and that has, you know, caused problems along here. So again, that's the reason for the hardship as we see it. There was a question about the trees on the lot, and so if any neighbors have trees that they think would make sense for removal as a part of this, they could bring those to staff's attention, and we can look into whether that would make sense as a part of this project. You know, obviously, if the trees are on somebody's personal property, that's not something that we could accommodate, but if there are some trees that are problematic that are either overhanging on this property or growing from this property, that's something that I think we could figure out a solution to. Those were the only... I mean, there were a lot of comments, but those were the only questions that I heard.
There was one question that was specifically about that if... That Richfield rediscovered was for move-up housing and if there was any data behind that.
I don't know if we have that specific data about how many Richfield rediscovered buyers are Richfield residents prior to buying. I can tell you anecdotally, you know, I talked to... At some point in time, I talked to every buyer of a Richfield rediscovered house. They have some connection to Richfield. Everybody that buys a house here has some connection. They either grew up here or they work here. One of the buyers is a Richfield firefighter who's currently not living in Richfield. The gentleman mentioned that he's worked here for 12 years. So I think that there's, I would say, at least 80% likelihood that whoever's buying isn't new to Richfield. They either work here, grew up here, had grandparents that lived here. some connection to the community, and that, that's why they come here looking for a place.
All right, if, then, at this point, I will move that we adopt a resolution approving a subdivision of property at 6812 Emerson Lake Lane and adopt a resolution approving a plat of the Galatians addition.
Second.
Additional comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Wayland.
Yeah, first, at this point, it seems a little ridiculous. But Director Stark, could you introduce yourself? You don't have a nameplate.
I'm John Stark. I, I wear two hats. I'm the Community Development Director for the city. I'm also the Executive Director of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you. And then specifically, a number I know that's been thrown out before. To the last question you were discussing, what is the current? It's currently about 70 or 80 people on the waitlist for the Richfield rediscovered program? Was that what I remember? Oh, a couple hundred, okay. Okay.
So that's not on the microphone. So for the public record, I would say Julie Urban, the Housing Manager, indicated that there are a couple of hundred people on an interest list. We don't have a waiting list, per se.
Okay.
But we have an interest list when we have houses or lots available. We notify the people on that interest list.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Garcia.
Well, I just was curious because I'm familiar with mitigation of noise for the airplanes. What's, what's different for the mitigation of freeway noise?
I, I believe the builder is going to use the same kinds of technologies that they use for the airplane noise for the highway noise. So improved windows and insulation. Okay.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Supple?
Since this has been discussed at multiple work sessions in HRA, but I don't think it's ever been in front of the council before. I know there were some concerns that were addressed about drainage and water. And there were also some concerns about if they put in that new road, how it's going to affect the neighborhood. And I was just wondering if Director Stark could put some of that on the public record and explain the situation.
Yes, thank you. I will do my best. The Public Works Director is not with us right now. But I think it would, my understanding is that with any new, any new construction project, any new development, the stormwater runoff from that development is limited to what it was prior to their coming to the site. So I'm guessing that on this site, there may be current runoff going various places. That just, that cannot be increased. The rate and the volume cannot be increased. Having said that, the goal is, even if there is current runoff, to mitigate that and have it be accommodated on-site. And so our, our Public Works Department has reviewed the plans for this development and made sure it meets all requirements for stormwater runoff. And as I said, doesn't, doesn't allow for additional runoff and in some places mitigates the current runoff.
All right, and then in regards to the road that's going in, I know there's been issues of timing because they're going to be doing mill and overlay, but also there were concerns about would there be room for public safety vehicles to turn around? And would the, like, lights be going into the neighborhood and disturbing neighbors?
Yep. So with regards to emergency vehicles, our police staff and our fire staff have both reviewed the plan and made sure that their vehicles can safely enter and exit. For fire vehicles, for example, they need to not only be able to turn around, but they need to be able to pass a vehicle if need be on the road. And so they feel like that that is met. We, we ran into a complication on the site that maybe would have made this easier. Ideally, there's all the land to the, let me get my bearings right. All the land next to the, next to 35W, so to the west of the property that is undeveloped, unused, MinDOT right-of-way. It would have been nice for the snowplows to just plow the snow over to that side. We've learned that MinDOT will not, will not sign off on the use of their land for snow plowing purposes of that nature. So that, if they would have, that would have maybe allowed us to utilize the land a little bit better. But as it is, the site can't accommodate snow plowing. My understanding is there's going to be, oh, maybe I'm saying this wrong. Okay, so we're working through that issue. At any rate, my understanding is that there's, it would be parking on one side of the road. So I think that unless I futted the snow plowing piece, I think that addresses all the questions you had.
But the, the city is going to require as part of the development agreement, though, that the builder has to work with the neighborhood so that, like, lights aren't coming into somebody's living room?
Yes. So one of the stipulations in the, in the agreement is that I would have to approve the landscaping plan. And so one of my primary concerns is headlights and how those would affect the neighbors. So there's one property, I think, that's the most affected. And so I'd certainly work with that property owner on whether a fence makes sense there or whether landscaping makes sense there. And so we would continue to work through that, not only with that one property owner, but if other folks feel like there are specific impacts, we will certainly try to address those.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, two clarifying questions and then a few comments. So are, can you talk a little bit? There was comments made as to the aesthetics of the Richfield rediscover homes. And I know that in the development of that program that has been taken into account by the city, can you just talk to, speak to that a little bit so that it fits within the, within the neighborhood?
Yeah, I would ask Housing Manager Julie Urban to answer that question.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, members of the council. So yes, you're right, our program requires that we do a review of the design, and we do look for neighborhood fit. And we have found that that, we get some of that through setbacks that are more significant, which Mr. Andrews's homes tend to be narrower and allow for a greater setback through roof lines. We require it to be a balanced and pleasing view from all sides. Often, some suburban developments, if you'll start to notice, maybe now that I point this out, if you'll go out, they, they only trim out the windows on the front. They maybe only have windows on the front. We do require that, that you consider all sides when developing. We do feel that Mr. Andrews does use higher-quality materials, and we encourage that as well. We felt like, in the case of this property, because they are kind of their own neighborhood, that we were looking for design just in relation to each other. They aren't really next to the other homes. They don't line up with the other homes in the neighborhood. So it was less of a concern for us. He is changing some of the roof lines. Everybody will have a different color to the house. So those are the kinds of things that we considered here, just given, because it's, it's pretty unique. It's, it's pretty secluded back in there.
Thank you very much. I live to next, I live close to several of these homes in East Richfield, and, and my home is a Rambler, and they are, these homes are surrounded by Ramblers. And in my neighborhood, I would say that those homes fit pretty well in, in my neighborhood. And then I had one other clarification point that I wanted to ask. Could you talk about the difference between the variance that's requested and then the clarification and misalignment with the comprehensive plan? And, and how that works out? Because it is, it is meeting one requirement, but then we have another one. So could you just explain that, that discrepancy?
Yes. I don't know that I can explain it. I can tell you what the discrepancy is. As I said, our, the minimum lot size is, in Richfield, is 6,700 square feet. The comprehensive plan allows for seven homes per acre, which is significantly smaller than 6,700 square feet. State statutes, I believe, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, would say that if any two, if land use controls, which the minimum lot size is, and the comprehensive plan are at odds with each other, you wish, you should rely more so on the comprehensive plan. So in this case, you would require, you would allow smaller lot sizes to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This is something that staff would like to rectify. We have, we've had it on our list of things to address, to bring the minimum lot size and the comprehensive plan into conformance with each other. And quite frankly, every time we're ready to bring this to you, a very specific situation like this comes up. And, you know, we don't want it, we don't want the decision to be made based on a specific situation rather than on kind of a global look at the city. So we will bring this back to you on a grander scale.
Thank you, Director Stark. And then lastly, I just want to make a couple of comments. I will be supporting this consideration and this motion because I have been, I have played, I feel like where I could play the most impact in this project is as a HRA member. I was one of two HRA members that voted against the five-home proposal as well as one of the HRA and council members that helped push to, to prolong or continue the application period so that our neighbors could submit a proposal. And those were the times and the places where I thought we could have most impact and be most effective, because I was also interested in a four-home proposal as well. So just to clarify that for the public and for the neighbors, that is where I felt like I could make the most impact. And looking at the vote that I have in front of me and votes that we have taken in the past, very similar situations with similar, similar reductions in lot size, I have voted in support of that because of things like the comprehensive plan and what is before us. So I, I wanted to make that clarification tonight. Councilmembers Trautman.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you, Director, Director Stark, for, for kind of walking us through a lot of the history. And, and I appreciate the mayor's support of slowing down that application process over the summer. And I, I was wondering, I was talking with Director Stark and some of the neighbors about that process, and I recognize this has been an ongoing and a long process. But when my constituents first came to me and shared some of their concerns about being heard in this process, I did, I did ask, and we did slow this process down, and there was an open period. Could you just kind of, for the record, just kind of explain? And for some, for maybe all the neighbors weren't aware of that, kind of walk us through that process of what that was and?
Yeah. You know, over the years, we'd heard from neighbors some different concepts of how the property could be used. And I think the, at a work session, we all heard that the neighbors wanted a chance to explore for themselves whether fewer houses could work both physically and financially. And so there was some time provided for the neighbors to work with a consultant or a builder or amongst themselves to submit a proposal. Ultimately, they decided not to submit a proposal for fewer homes.
And, you know, I, I appreciate, I appreciate every, anytime somebody comes to, to our council chambers and shares, shares an opinion, I know, and some people said they're, they're nervous. I just appreciate that. It's, and, and so whether you agree with us or don't agree with us, this is, this is what democracy looks like. And I'm going to support the project as, as presented, as the only proposal that's been presented. And my modest request, and I, and I, knowing, knowing you guys outside of the council chambers, I know this is true. You know, the talks about, the comments about open arms and food and jokes on the street. I know tonight's maybe not a happy night, but you have neighbors. For everybody that's here, you have new neighbors that, that, that are going to be new neighbors. And so even if tonight's a hard night, I would just, I would just invite folks to look forward to, to your, to your new neighbors and, and consider extending an olive, an olive branch.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Wayland.
I just want to say, having seen a, a few winces in the crowds, I, I want to acknowledge a couple of things where, that should be corrected. There was an exact quote of that this, they're not next to, to existing homes. And a couple, saw a couple reactions to the, the renderings that it's, it's not a golf course. Your homes are right, your yards are right there. I recognize that. But I do, coming back to what Councilman Trautman was just saying, this is the one option we've, we've, that's been feasible and has come through of a, a many-years-long process. And I, I think this is a better option than leaving it as an empty lot. And so I, yeah, that's what I have to say.
Councilmember Garcia.
Well, when I first saw this proposal, I didn't like it. And, you know, naturally, I talked to staff about it. And I was pleased that at least, you know, they were, the, the process that they used incorporated everyone's feedback. Everyone, you know, Met Council or MinDOT or, or Public Works. It, it was just, looked at the fiscal aspects of it. I was just really impressed because I think this has been looked at kind of like under a microscope, which is unusual that it would take this long. And I too will, will support it. And I think, you know, Richfield's changing, and, and I think we're increasing our tax base. But I think it's a project that hopefully, a year from now, we can look at it and, and be proud of it. Which sometimes happens because a lot of the times, we have a lot of folks that, like, for example, Best Buy, nobody wanted Best Buy. And look at what happens now, you know? It's really done well, and it's, and we've acclimated to it, and we're proud of it now.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Any additional comments from council?
I did want to thank the neighbors because I know that you spent a lot of time talking with people and bringing up concerns. And they, we did listen to those concerns and, and check them out. And I, I'm guessing that you may not be happy with the result, but I do think that the process was a good one and that a lot of issues were dealt with and thought about. And so the, the process was examined fully. It wasn't just a knee-jerk reaction to something. There was a lot of time spent looking into different things. And I thank you for the time that you spent asking all those questions because they were truly good questions, and it helped make the project a better project.
Any additional comments?
Well, I just wanted to mention too, when you're talking about the neighbors, I think one of the things too is that they really made sure they were informed and that they researched what they needed to do and that they participated in the process too. It's not a process, you know, I mean, we're, this is not going to, this is not going to please them. But I think we've done our best to work with everyone involved.
Well, and, and I think that's future tense. We will continue to, you know, as this goes on. You know, I'd invite the neighbors to, to call us, to talk to us. And, you know, we can continue making this a better project as we go along.
Good.
All right, with that, Councilmember Trautman.
Thank you, sorry, Mayor. I, I do, I do want to just call out one, one other person, Julie Urban, who I know you've, you've worked a lot on this too. And I know neighbors, specifically Mr. Powell, Mr. Archer, probably have talked to the, the most in this project. A lot of people have put a lot of hours. But I know on, with, with lots of parties, answering a lot of questions, moving communication back and forth, getting answers and receiving concerns, you've been the, the point person for a lot of that. So I just want to recognize that and, and thank you for that.
And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. Thank you. The next item on the calendar is, oh, that on our agenda goes to Councilmember Trautman.
goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just take a minute. The next item for consideration is to consider a resolution granting a site plan, site plan approval and variances for a proposal to construct 127-unit apartment building on a portion of the Lund's property at 6200 and 6228 Penn Avenue South. Lund's Real Estate has submitted a land use application requesting a site plan and approval variances for a six-story, 127-unit apartment building in the northwest corner of their existing parking lot. And the property is zoned mixed-use community and is located in the Penn Avenue Corridor Overlay District. The proposed site plan meets all zoning requirements aside from two variances. It's a six-story, it's a six-story building. Resident parking is provided in the underground and at grade-level parking. And the parking ratios for both the store and the residential components exceed the city requirements. In addition to ample accommodations for vehicles, the proposal includes improved public sidewalks on Penn Avenue and pedestrian connections throughout the site. Variances are required, or excuse me, are requested for impervious surface coverage on the Lund's property store at, and the apartment buildings setback distance from Penn Avenue. Regarding impervious surface coverage, the store parcel exceeds the maximum allowed coverage of 80%. However, the overall combined site impervious surface coverage would be slightly below the 80% at 79.4%. Staff finds that it's reasonable to consider the two lots as part of a cohesive whole. Regarding the front yard setback for the apartment building, code allows a maximum setback of 20 feet. The proposed building setback is 141.6 feet to the east lot lining abutting Penn Avenue. Staff finds this is reasonable to allow greater building setback for the purposes of maintaining existing traffic and parking circulation patterns for the grocery store, which has operated in this location since 1967. Additionally, this building placement allows the underground parking access to be oriented away from adjacent residential neighborhoods to the west, which I think is an important consideration. And the proposed building exceeds the required setback from the residential properties to the west of the site. Lund's has provided a traffic study attached to this report. And Lund's representatives have met with the city, Hennepin County, and MinDOT staff to discuss potential impacts to the Penn Avenue, to Penn Avenue near Crosstown. There are currently three driveway access points to Penn Avenue and no changes to access are currently proposed. The city and Hennepin County are currently embarking on a joint study of Penn Avenue between Crosstown and 68th Street to identify improvements that could be made as a part of a mill and overlay project planned for 2021. Lund's has committed to engaging in this process and providing additional analysis of traffic patterns to and from their site in the event that any of the current driveway locations are impacted by future changes to Penn Avenue. Staff finds that the proposed project meets local, meets the goals of the comprehensive plan and zoning code requirements and therefore recommends approval of the application. So given that, I would move we adopt a resolution. Or will, I guess first, do we, do we move or do we have staff?
Oh, yeah, we can ask staff if there's any clarification on this one?
No, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I would just say, you know, on a proposal this large, it's remarkable that they are only seeking two variances. Usually, we, on a proposal of this size, it would be a planned unit development because without being a planned unit development, it would be a dozen variances. And one of the variances is kind of with an asterisk, the impervious surface coverage. You know, it's only if you look at the, the two lots and split them apart that they don't meet it. If you look at them as a whole, it, it does meet that. And again, the setback from Penn, I think in, in the context of a brand-new development, it would make more sense to push the building up to Penn. But in the context of trying to integrate it with an existing development that has established setbacks, I think it makes complete sense.
Then, thank you, Director Stark. I would move we adopt a resolution granting a site plan approval and variance for an apartment development on the Lund's property at 2600 and 2228 Penn Avenue South.
Second?
All right, any other additional questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, as the liaison to the Planning Commission, wanted to bring up some of the, the questions that they had asked. They spent a lot of time discussing the traffic impacts and, and did make a point that I felt was valid and so followed up on, that this is, this is not the only proposal in that area. And so it doesn't make sense to look at traffic impacts for just this one. So I talked with Director Asher over in Public Works as well as the, excuse me, other staff relating more to the traffic reports. And basically, the Penn Avenue, which would be the main impacted road, with both this development and the, the Novo development would still really only get up to about 14,000 cars per day that the, the street could have a capacity of up to 20,000. And in 2008, it was up to 17,000. And so it's still well below levels that it had been. So I appreciate the, the Planning Commission raising that. And I, I think sometimes when we, when people ask about traffic, we respond by saying that, well, it will still be within the capacity of the road. I think it's worth acknowledging that, yes, there will be more traffic, but that the, the road can handle more and has in the past handled more. So appreciate them bringing up that concern and the extra research, but it doesn't, I'm not at all concerned about that being an issue.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, just a couple of comments. I know I, I received an email, I think it was today, with some citizen concerns about the, the 20-foot or the 40-foot setback. And I think there was a misunderstanding that that was a maximum, not a, not a minimum setback, that the, the building actually meets the setbacks requirements for, for the, the properties to the, to the west. And I just, I just wanted to call that out. And maybe Director Stark, you could just, just clarify that.
Yeah, the, the required setback to the residential properties to the west would be 20 feet at a minimum. This development is providing 48 feet 3 inches. So it's, it's substantially larger than the minimum.
And thank you, Director Stark. And, you know, another, a couple of observations about the project. One thing that I appreciate, you know, it's so hard to develop almost anywhere in Richfield without saying, we're going to have to take homes, we're going to have to take businesses, we got to tear down. This is, this is a development that requires no tear down. You're, you're building where, where you started. It's, it's somebody who's had a longstanding presence in our community. And they're, they're investing and they're not tearing anything down. And when it comes to landscaping, a lot of the trees that we plant will one day provide the coverage and the, and some of the interference that we, you know, and the aesthetic that, that some of the current owners may not appreciate. But we have really beautiful, mature trees that, that the developer is preserving. And I appreciate that and I appreciate the considerations. There were a number of considerations from the time this, this project was first proposed to us to today, from, from the sightlines to setting it back even further. If I, if memory serves, it is set back further than it was initially. And there's consideration, if you look at the sightlines from sitting in the backyards of, or even the, the homes, that you can't see the top of the, the top of the, the development or the apartments, but you see, you see the tops of the trees. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the citizen feedback. I appreciate that you, you as a developer took the time to, to hear and make changes to the project based on that feedback. I think it's a better project because of that. And, and I'm, I'm pleased to support it.
Other comments? Councilmember Supple?
Just to follow up on that, I think in the original plans, it, the building was oriented a different way. And because of the community feedback, the builders, I think rotated at like 90 degrees so that the length of the building is more along the freeway instead of by the homes. And that helped to deal with all of those issues you talked about. So I think by listening to the community feedback, it did turn into a better project and one that I would support.
Other comments? I think councilmembers, oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I realized I forgot one thing and actually want to clarify. The other, the other piece that the Planning Commission had brought up was a more direct pedestrian route through the parking lot to get to the, the bus stop on Penn Avenue. And in some of the plans on the, in the staff report, it seemed like that edit had been made and in some it's not. I just want to clarify that that is in fact the new plan. Okay, I see the development team nodding. So I appreciate the, the flexibility on that. And again, thank the, the Planning Commission for taking note of that and getting that improved.
Councilmembers have shared several of the things I wanted to say. So I look forward to the continued partnership between the city, the development team, and the neighbors. I did see also several changes that were made. And it's always great to see that, that partnership. And this is just the beginning, so. All right, all in, oh wait, did we do the motion? We did, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we will consider a resolution abolishing the Lindale Hub Nicklet Maintenance District established in December of 1980 and rescinding the, that maintenance district services ordered for the period January 1st of 2020 to December 31st of 2020. This LHN Maintenance District was established to recover special maintenance expenses within the area in 1981. At the November 13th City Council Work Session, which I'd recommend people listen to the recording of if they want more information, staff received direction to discontinue the district and not accrue charges in 2020. Many of the landscape design elements within the district have changed or have been removed through redevelopment and recent road reconstruction projects. It was also discussed that properties that have redeveloped now have maintenance agreements defining maintenance responsibilities between the city and developer. Many of the special features unique to properties in the LHN District at the time of its establishment have changed, been removed, or are now common throughout other areas of the city. With that, is there any staff report for this item? Okay.
Nothing further. We discussed it at the work session, which I also would recommend if the public is curious to watch.
I, I also will repeat, as we clarified in the work session, this doesn't mean any of the maintenance will cease to be done. It's just shifting the, the responsibility of who is doing it or who is paying for it to reflect these changes in the last almost 40 years. So I will, I will move to adopt a resolution abolishing the Lindale Hub Nicklet Maintenance District established in December 1980 and rescinding the LHN Maintenance District Services ordered for the year of 2020.
Second?
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. And there's another resolution as well?
Oh, I did both.
Oh, you did them both together?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we got them both together? Good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. The next item goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is consideration to consider approval of a resolution approving the contract with the Police Lieutenant Steamsters 320 for the contract period January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. The city staff has completed labor negotiations with the Police Lieutenant Steamsters 320, the union. The provisions of the 2020-21, 2021 labor agreement cover all the employees in this union, which consists of three different positions. Okay, and that, the provisions include a one-time equity adjustment to the base monthly wage of the top step of the pay grade in 2020 and 2021. The one-time equity adjustment in each year is $78 per month to the base monthly wage. When evaluating wages, the city strives to keep its employee group's wages within the average similar to other cities around the area. And analysis revealed that the top step of this pay plan had fallen below the average necessitating the one-time equity adjustment to the tops, to the top step of this pay plan. Up to a 105 per month increase the city contribution towards health insurance and a 25 cents per monthly increase towards employee single dental coverage. An agreement to accept the same level of contributions that management and general services employees will be receiving in 2021 for health and dental insurance coverage. And our negotiator, who wears many hats, Pam Dematrinkle, do you want to add anything to it? Because this is, again, again, you, you, you know, you're, you're, you've done these many times and, and we appreciate that, you know, the, the time and, and the actual negotiating efforts that you put forth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Garcia. I don't have anything to add. There's also, except that there's a wage adjustment at 3% in both years of this contract. But I want to give a lot of credit to HR Manager Jesse Swenson, who helps me with these negotiations. She's an integral part of it. And for this labor group, we did note that there was an equity adjustment necessary to be made at the top step of this pay plan. So that is, as you pointed out, part of the recommendation. And we're happy to provide this proposed agreement to you.
You've done a good job again. So I, I will, I don't know if any comments?
I can open it up after, so if you want to make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution approving the provisions of the 2020-2021 labor agreement with the Police Lieutenant's, Lieutenant's Teamsters 320 bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
Second?
Any council comments or questions? Nope. I just want to say also, second, the thanks to Assistant City Manager Dematrinkle and our, and Jesse in HR. And I also appreciate just seeing the outline of the adjustments and provisions. They're very straightforward. They make sense to cover this equity increase as well as our rising care, or our rising costs in health insurance and making sure that we're providing excellent benefits to our folks. So thank you again for your work every single time and, and working with our unions. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to consider the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with the Police Sergeant Teamsters 320 for the contract period of January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2021 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. City staffs completed labor negotiations with Police Sergeant Teamsters 320. The provisions of, the provisions of the 2020-2021 labor agreement cover all the employees in this union, which consists of eight positions. It's a two-year contract that provides a wage adjustment to 3% in 2020 and a wage adjustment of 3% in 2021. Other provisions of the tentative agreement include up to $105 per month increase in the city's contribution towards health insurance, a 25 cents per month increase towards employee single dental coverage, an agreement to accept the same level of contribution that management and general services, general services employees will receive in 2021 for health and dental insurance coverage and an increase in court standby pay for $2, of $2 from $35 to $37 per occurrence. So I would make, I would, so I'd move that we adopt a resolution providing the provision of the 2020-2021 labor agreement with the Police Sergeant's Teamsters 320 bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. the agreement.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Wayland.
First, I'll just say for anyone who feels like they're getting deja vu, if you weren't listening carefully, it's a lot of the same things. This is for the police sergeants, the police lieutenants was the previous one, they are different unions, but in general, just want to say, thank you to, to all the staff in the HR department. I, I appreciate the good work, as others have already said, but also continuing to see that our union and non-union employees get the same benefits, that I think that's really important, and I think that's just another testament to unions bringing up the, the standards for all workers, so appreciate that we make that commitment.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report.
Nothing to report, Mayor and council members.
Great. The next item is to Councilmember Garcia.
Claims and payroll. We need to do, to pay the claims and award the payroll, so I will move claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is anybody here for the open forum? Well, actually, I don't have any cards, so nobody's here. So seeing that we have no, nobody here for open forum, we will wrap up with the hats off to hometown hits. I'll start with Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things today. One, that is actually belated, I think I missed the last council meeting bringing it up, but really want to lift up Neil, our Communications and Community Engagement Director, for his work on the Richfield U program, a program for residents to come learn about what our city's doing. I was honored, along with Councilmember Garcia, to be there at the, the final session for their graduation, and I, I know there, there was more interest in this first program than there was space, and we'll be hosting it again. I'm just excited about that opportunity for residents to get more informed and more involved. And then my second one, want to thank Blanca on staff for her work with preparing for the census, was able to attend with several community leaders, thinking through how we, how we make sure that everyone gets counted and understands the importance of the census. So want to thank her for the work already, and the many, many people for the, the work to come and give residents another heads up to be on the lookout in spring for the census materials and make sure that you get counted.
Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last night, we were fortunate to meet with a number of youth from our community that are, we're interviewing to be youth commissioners, and it's always a great experience and fills you with a lot of optimism for the future when you talk to our, our applicants for the youth commissioners. So I look forward to working with them, and we also have a few open positions, so watch for announcements if you're interested in being on a youth commission. Secondly, I believe Councilmember Wayland already talked about the TIF decertifications, and one thing is that they were decertified a few years early, so that, that they were, the money is back on the tax base earlier than expected, and so that's always a good thing and good planning for the long range. So thank you to the staff that worked on all of that. And the third thing is that we have two homes being built through Habitat for Humanity with the New Homes Program. One of them is on Irving, and it's incorporating universal design concepts for accessibility, and there's another one on Portland that I've watched go up all summer, and it's been fun seeing all the volunteers come and work on that. So thank you to everybody involved in that. And finally, this one is not so much a hats off, but a reminder that starting at midnight, the city will be under a snow emergency, which means that all cars have to be off the street until all city streets have been plowed curb to curb, and any cars remaining on the streets are subject to ticketing and towing. Also, the Public Works Department asks that all garbage cans be removed from the streets and be placed in the residents' driveways or at least two feet off the curb. Our plow crews are some of the best in the metro, and they're going to do everything they can to make sure the roads are plowed efficiently and effectively. So please stay safe and remember to move your cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I wanted to mention that the Minnesota House of Representatives Capital Investment Bonding Committee came to Richfield and toured the Seventy-seventh Street underpass, and, you know, they were, they were, it really takes, takes a lot to get a committee out to a local community, and I think that Mike Howard, our state representative, did a very, very good job. And we know him, of course, that, that, you know, that he's, you know, he really has pushed and tried to do as much as he can for Richfield. I know he's not, you know, I know it's not a parochial thing, but I've always found that when you get a committee here and they actually look at what the project is and can ask questions, I think it's a, it's really, really important, and I think, and I, and I looked at the committee that came, and the only one that I was able to remember that I served with is the Chair, Mary Murphy. And I, you know, and I trust that Mary will do her best, as per my note to her. So, you know, always, we want to always cover, cover all our bases, so. Let's see what, oh yeah, and I wanted to mention too, now, I hope everyone has a joyful Thanksgiving. Please be careful, drive safe, and we, this is, we didn't need this at this time, but last time I had, that's a time I had a motion to do something about the weather, it just didn't quite, they didn't, it didn't quite follow what my recommendation was. So there you go.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be, I'll be brief. The, the items not mentioned, I want to take, take my hat off to, to our firefighters, who were able to donate one-hundred-and-eighty-three coats to our STEM school students, and that's just, it's a great project, and it's tremendous, and it's very timely, given our, our snow emergency. And then the other quick announcement is just a reminder that we have our Richfields Farmers Market that takes place throughout, throughout the winter, and so that's coming up in a couple of weeks. It's going to be December thirteenth, but it's a great opportunity to do not just food shopping, but gift shopping for the holidays. So pencil that in if you haven't, if you've never been, it's at three o'clock, it's on Fridays, it's going to be Friday, December thirteenth is the next indoor farmers market, and it's going to be at our community center.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And the only item I had Councilmember Troutman shared, but I actually want to just share a little bit more about the awesome, the awesome activities we had with the firefighters at our schools today. So it was through the Firefighter Union, Local Twelve Fifteen, who had donated the one-hundred-and-eighty-three brand-new coats to our kindergarten, kindergarten class and first-grade students at the STEM school. And this is a part of the union's Operation Warm initiative, and they've been doing this work for the past four years, and over the past four years, they've donated more than five hundred coats to Centennial, Sheridan Hills, and dual-language school students. So thank you so much to our firefighters. And lastly, I just ask everyone to please think about your neighbors in our community who may be alone over the holidays, and people who struggle with holidays, maybe because they lost a family member or, or for various things, and just take a little extra time and consideration to think about those in our community, and just doing something nice that can really make a huge difference. And it's, it's just the small things that help us build community every day, and the holidays and Thanksgiving is a great time to, to make sure that we are doing that with our neighbors, so.
I have another one.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
I just, I just wanted to, to recognize my husband, Joe, and we've been married fifty, fifty-six years, and both of us always say one-hundred-and-fifty-six, because we, we have such a great sense of humor, but, but it's, it's, I just want to thank him because he's, he's been really involved in, in everything that I've done, and he's, he's always been there for me and for my daughter, and I think fifty-six years of marriage is a long time. And so I just wanted to recognize that, I know it's not easy to live with me, but, but that's, you know, that's the way life goes. So, anyway, so, so just want to let him know that I care very much and deeply about him.
Very sweet. Congratulations, Councilmember Garcia.
Congratulations.
Great. And with that, we will adjourn our meeting.